Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, September 30th, 2024 edition of the Northborough Select Board. Mitch Cohen, I chair this lovely group, and I will call us to order at 6:03 PM. I have some opening remarks because we are conducting ourselves hybrid tonight. This open meeting of the Northborough Select Board is being conducted in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023 relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the Northborough Select Board are allowed and encouraged to participate either in person or remotely. The Act allows the Northborough Select Board to meet entirely in person and remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream or the recording of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting doesn't have anything exquisite for public comment, but public comment is, of course, always welcome. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Let's see, let's start in the room first. Lisa.
Here.
Julianne.
Here.
Laura.
Here.
And remotely, Mike.
Here.
Also with us, we have Town Administrator Tim McInerney.
Hello.
And Assistant Town Administrator Diane Weckel.
Present.
Very good. So, as was mentioned during the opening speech, we are being recorded, and let's go along with our agenda. First item, we have Acceptance of Grant Awards: Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response (SAFAR). Fire Chief Dave Prantie, come on up.
I'm gonna bring the deputy up with me.
Sure.
That way, if I say something wrong, he can't kick me under the table.
You've got some additional friends in the audience, I always appreciate it.
I always, I have lots of friends, so.
Great.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Before I begin the presentation, there are some people I'd like to thank who I believe were very instrumental in helping us be successful in attaining this grant. The first group is the Select Board, who voted unanimously in our previous meeting to allow us to go ahead and get underway and move forward, and we really appreciate that. Second would be Senator Warren, Senator Markey, and Representative McGovern, all of who submitted letters of support to FEMA for on our behalf. That helps a lot when FEMA gets those letters from our representatives, it helps us a lot. Third are the members of the Northborough Fire Department who assisted by reviewing numerous narratives and helping us look at numbers and figure out everything. They were terrific. And finally, and probably the most important, is the grant-writing team, which would be Deputy Espazey, Captain Dutrimo, who's behind us, firefighter medic Ward, who is not here tonight, and in fact, I think he's on duty, and hazmat specialist Mike Parr, who is in the back, and Mike did most of the drafting of the narratives, which is amazing, he did a terrific job. So, everything you're gonna hear tonight, with a few exceptions you've heard before. When we appeared before you last time, we presented all the statistical data justifying our need for additional staffing, such as calls for service, overlapping calls, EMS transport numbers, or total workload, just to name a few of the things. We presented the numerous times requests have been made for additional staffs over the years, and we discussed the many benefits of adding personnel. And we presented our estimated number for the grant, which we presented at 2,807,784. This is one thing I do have to change, because it was actually 2,864,376. So, it was actually more than we had originally anticipated. We were, we are, we're and are still very aware of all the requests from various town departments for additional funding. Everybody wants more, we understand that, which is the main reason we sought out this grant, because it funds these positions for 36 months. And we thought that would be a great way to get these positions with very little impact on the community. Refresh you're on SAFAR, where the Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response is, the grant was created specifically to provide federal funding directly to fire departments to help us meet industry minimum standards of staffing and response for 24 hours. It's to help us provide adequate fire protection, adequate inspections, also for EMS response, or traditional missions, EMS response, fire prevention, as I said, risk reduction, and public education. Now, the process is pretty interesting, it requires a significant amount of work. Information needed is very extensive, data gathering and analysis takes up a lot of time. Now, I've told you guys before, and you know from my reports, I'm a geek, so I can get you the data and I can give it to you, but to change it into a narrative is a whole nother ballgame. We had to look at budgeting, we had to look at responses, we had to look at will, what are we currently doing for an operational plan, and what would we do for an operational plan going forward? What's important is, we had to look back three to four years for all of this. It wasn't just what we're doing now, it's what has your responses been for three years? What have your budgets been for three years? How are you budgeted? How much is taxable, how much is not taxable property? There's all kinds of stuff we have to look up. One of the most critical components is that we had to be able to demonstrate that upon being awarded the grant of additional staffing, we would be able to meet the guidelines established by the National Fire Protection Association of Response. Using our automatic mutual aid agreements that we've established with all of our mutual aid partners, hiring eight people do allow us to meet those, does allow us to meet those standards. The other most critical component of this, and I can't stress this enough, is the departments have to be able to show that the community support the program. And your vote several months ago did that for us, so that you supported the program. So, how has this all scored? There's three different reviews. First review is electronic pre-scoring. Our application goes in electronically, it runs through some kind of computer program, and it says, yes, you align with the program's funding priorities. That's number one. Number two is a peer review process. And in the peer review process, what they do is they bring in fire service experts from across the country. They fly everyone into Emmitsburg, Maryland, at the Fire Academy, and they review this at tables of 10, and they pass it around, and they all review you, and they give you a ranking of where they think you place out of all of them. And then the final one is the internal FEMA review. And applications are reviewed for completeness, adherence to guidance, technical feasibility, and probably most effect, most important effectiveness. Will this grant do what we're saying it will do? Because some places will submit a grant and say, it'll do this, and they look at it and go, no, it won't, it's not enough money there, it won't do that. So, this year, there was a total of 2,161 grant submissions under the SAFAR. Of those, 191 were awarded, 11% success rate. Applications from the state of Massachusetts for us hiring, 60 of them. So, there were 60 applications just from the state to hire people through SAFAR. Five were approved, and we were one of those five. Now, this is a 36-month grant performance window. As I mentioned, the total amount of the grant is $2,864,376.24. Can't forget the 24 cents. It includes salary plus COLAs for two years, so you get the salary for the first year, a 2% COLA for the second year, and a 2% COLA for the third year. It includes all stipends that are in the collective bargaining agreement, which is their medical, their medic stipends, their education stipends, their certifications. So, any stipend that is called out in the collective bargaining agreement. It includes all the Medicare costs. It includes health insurance at a family level, so not at the single level, at the family level. It includes life insurance, pension, and OPEB, and then their IOD insurance, internon-duty insurance. So, all of that is covered within this grant. The amount the first year is $935,948.32. The amount the second year is $954,667.28. And the amount the third year is $973,760.64. And there's all kinds of ways to work that to get the money back. Everything from them giving it to us every two weeks to match our payroll, to every six months, to once a year, to the end of the program. And different departments do it differently. I've conferred with Jason, we spoke about it, so whatever works, once we get it awarded, we accept it, we move forward, we'll sit down with FEMA, and we'll talk about whatever would work best for us and fit best into our system. We have six months to complete the hiring process. Now, we were awarded the grant on the 23rd. We have to accept that grant, and then we have six months, so we have to have everyone hired by March. It's our anticipation, we'll have everyone hired by the middle of January. That's what we're planning for. We're very excited about this. I can tell you that the minute I heard about it, I was just thrilled. We're here before you tonight to ask you to formally accept the grant and to give me permission to go online and to click the "We Accept" button. And I'm glad to take any questions.
Questions from the board? I have one quick question while other people are thinking. You mentioned 2% COLA is covered by that, that's based on the current contract?
Yeah, so they base it on the current contract, but they also look nationwide.
Okay.
Right, so they'll say nationwide, we're seeing averages of whatever, but they look, they actually have, we had to submit, Mike, you had to submit our contract, correct, all the information? So, we had to submit all that, and they look at that, and they base, they don't base it on going forward, they base it on when you submit it.
Okay. So, if the contract, if the next contract is different than the current contract, they would cover the old amount but not the newer amount?
Correct, they would cover the 2% COLA, and we'd have to cover the difference.
Okay. Gotcha, answered that question, thanks. Laura.
So, I really appreciate this update and all the work that's gone into applying for the grant. One thought, there's been several thoughts, but one of the most important ones is that we had the financial summit a couple of months ago, and I wasn't aware of a lot of the pent-up needs that we have in the community, and I'm just nervous about the cost that this is going to, the increase in cost, given all of the other projects that, or needs that the town has. I recognize that our fire team has been equally impacted by this, and I recognize the hours that you guys put in, and I appreciate it. I just, is there any flexibility in the number of people, like, that we would hire?
So, the way this grant is set up, when we submit our grant and all our narrative, we have to justify the number of people we're asking for.
Uh huh.
The number of people we're asking for were eight in order to meet the number. If we drop it, we lose the grant.
Okay.
If we say no to the grant, then we probably won't see the grant again. That's just the way that this, that this grant has worked out in the past.
Yeah.
Can I follow up on that, Laura?
What do you mean by the cost impact?
So, this grant is for three years.
Correct.
But there will be a cost to the taxpayers thereafter.
Correct, but just so it's understood, there's nothing in the grant award that says that you have to keep those people.
I just.
Nope.
So, there's nothing in there, like we said, we've justified it. So, when I talk about justifying cost, this is 191 awarded applications nationwide.
Yeah.
We have proven a need to the federal government.
Yep.
And then, rather than, you know, sit and hopefully wait for the town to fund our positions, we did the extra while, took the extra look, we got the approval from the board prior to applying, because that's one of the requirements, and did the extra work to get the people. It's desperately needed, we've proved it, we've proved it internally, mentally, physically, response-wise, known by the national standards. To pass on this grant is not advised, I would say. I would think differently if the old contract said you had to keep the people for five years.
It did, the old contract was completely different when it first started.
There are, these are very sought-after, very difficult grants to get.
I recognize that.
And there are negative impacts to the town should you not accept it.
I understand.
Okay.
Just, if I may, when we had the financial summit, we talked about modeling
Yeah.
...the future years into that growth and try to create a stabilization account to bear.
Yeah.
You know, to keep this going beyond years.
This was actually built into that.
Yeah, so we have that in that financial summit. Jason can speak to the particulars, but you're not gonna solve for everything, but you still need to, you know, provide the service, and if it's essential in their eyes and essential in your eyes, it's a good thing to have, and we're trying to plan against not having a major impact in year four.
Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate that, and.
So, when I say negative impacts on the community, what I'm alluding to is not just the impact on the services, but a lot of people submitted letters of support.
Yep.
FEMA is very specific on awarding these, so it's just not a good look. Not to say that's a force to get it in, but it's, it's a benefit that, you know, we're saving the taxpayers $2.8 million to give them a service. What we will do in three years, I guess we figure that out in three years, Jason's got a plan for building it up, but in three years, if, say, the bottoms falling out of the world, you know, there's no harm, no foul, it's kind of a lease-to-own kind of system.
That's a good way to put it.
So.
Thank you.
Julianne, I think it is.
I, I mean, it sounds, it sounds great for three years, but it is eventually a big monetary impact on the town after that. And I don't feel prepared to vote on this tonight. We don't have a copy of the grant, all I have is an old staffing study from 2015. You're, you obviously, sorry?
No, I'm waiting for you to finish. No, go ahead.
No, no.
No, I understand, but we gave you all that information, you have, you have an old study of the staffing from 2015. We gave you all the information, we took that study, we compared it to where we were, we looked at the numbers, we provided all that information to you when you first voted on it. The, the, the grant award is exactly what I told you, that is as simple as it is, it is not.
So, those staffing studies don't mean anything. It's hired by somebody to do a staffing survey. The National Fire Protection Agency sets what the standard is. We do not meet the standard currently. The citizens of the community do not get the minimum service that's required nationally. This will give it to them at not a dollar out of their pocket, well, other than a few other aspects that we will fund through budgeting for potentially in three years, not knowing what to do.
It's also important to know, we do have a timeline. If we do not accept that grant within 30 days, it's gone.
Right, and our next meeting is?
After the 23rd, or on the date that it's due.
Right.
So, Julianne, we're here, what are your specific questions?
I, I think that in order, to do our due diligence, we should see a copy of the grant.
Correct, but the grant is how many pages?
Grant's 20 pages, 18 to 20 pages, and most of it is, you have the final, except for the first four pages, it's you shall do this, and it's all the different federal laws you have to follow. There's really, exactly what I gave you is exactly what the grant says.
So, we've given you all the information that you need for that document. It's more designed for the town administrator to follow the rules on how they do it, and for the finance on how they do it. There's nothing in there that's outside the scope of what we've told you. I mean, it's, it's a document that, again, we've reviewed it in the prior meeting when we got your approval, that, all that information was in that document, and that's when it was reviewed by all you.
Well, we agreed to have you apply for the grant.
Correct, but we provided you, we provided you with all.
With the numbers.
The information.
That they took.
How the grant works, how it's funded, how long it's funded for, what the staffing needs are. All that was given to the board, because I will say, I don't know how many hundreds of hours that myself, and Mike, and Pat, and Ethan, and the chief, and Jason, and everybody else has put in for this grant. Had you withheld us from the start, we're not going to accept this, we wouldn't have put in. We will be embarrassed as a fire service, not only in our own state, but nationwide. And we will never, ever get another FEMA grant. I mean, it's just.
That's what it's been since.
And I just know from other communities across the country on what happens to them. So, I just ask for the support, you know, we can, we can figure out in three years, all right, what do we do? And not just what do we do, in that three years, Jason's a very smart person, he can figure out what the best way is to build that up. But your community has five firefighters a shift, and that is not enough. And turnover is a significant issue in this town. And turnover equals to always having new firefighters and paramedics, which equals to not a good service, because they don't know the town, and they're usually newer, or they're not wanted somewhere else. This attracts firefighters. This will give your firefighters who's deserved it, I don't even work shift, they deserve the staffing, mentally, physically. This is why we put in for this, not because we want them, we need them.
These guys are constantly running. I mean, we had, they were out, they were out on double medicals just before I came here today. The other day, we had, last night at the fireworks, they were out on multiple calls at the same time. We almost had to clear people from the fireworks to go cover calls. Westbrook came in and covered for us. This isn't something that we didn't provide the information for, and that's what I'm concerned about when I hear that you're not ready to vote tonight. We've provided a ton of information and all the numbers, it's not new tonight, you've heard it all. So, I mean, I, that's where we sit. So, it's up to you, if you have any other questions.
Julianne, are you all set with your question for now? And we can certainly come back. Lisa?
Okay, so, again, thank you very much, and I'm sure that having you involved in FEMA has probably helped us.
Nope, had nothing to do with it. Nothing to do with it. Totally different separation from FEMA than the other one.
Yeah. There's a couple of questions I do have. In the current contract that you have with the union?
Uh huh.
How long is that for?
They're in negotiations.
Just yearly?
They're in negotiations right now, it's a three-year contract. They're in negotiations right now for a new one.
For a new one, and the negotiation would start in a year or two years?
They're in negotiations now.
Current contract expires this coming June.
Yep.
Okay, so, we know that's gonna happen. The contract written for it. Now, when you hire these eight individuals, how is their contract for employment written? Do they understand that they may be let go?
There is no contract for employment for these firefighters. When we hire them, they are hired as regular firefighters within, once they come off probation, they're covered under the contract for the, for the union, and within the union's contract is the ability to let go if you need to financially, so it's covered.
So, but that, but they become part of the, part of the whole family, they're not separated, they're not, these eight people, just because we say today we're taking them in, that in three years, they're the first ones on the cut. That's not what that means.
Correct.
How many employees do we have in total now? You're, I think you told me five with four shifts?
Five per shift, four shifts, so there's 20 line personnel right now.
So, there's 20, 20 linemen, that doesn't include any of your other positions, that's just.
There's one in myself, and the admin, and the deputy.
Okay. So, and then what will happen now is it'll be 28 plus three, correct?
It'll be seven per shift.
But the number of people in the group, in your department is going to be 28 plus three, okay? And, and I think probably one of the questions that Laura's probably talking to is that once we had the summit, I mean, we're asking questions because it's our due diligence, so I don't want you to think that.
No, not at all.
Okay. So, at the summit, many people came forward, many people needed employment increases for their departments, and especially, you know, you and the police are the men that, we have a lady.
Yes, we do.
That has, you know, the most impact, I think, on day-to-day services. And not making the DPW feel any less important, they are, but, but we have, we have departments that I think at some point now, we're looking at keeping things more on an equal level and making sure that, you know, you each have the same amount of coverage for your needs and your expenses and that sort of thing. So, and a big add, I don't know if we've done eight at one time, have we done that in the past? Because I don't, I haven't been here to know that.
It's funded through a grant, so it's something different.
I doubt you've ever hired eight at one shot, not that I know of, not from all the history I could find.
Okay. And I just, just, from our conversations when you first came through, I thought, you had said you were looking at, oh, maybe if we get seven, that would be good if we get seven.
No, seven per shift.
No, seven per shift.
Seven per, so you're adding two men, two per shift, so that would be that way, okay. Hold on a second. Contract we did that. And I know that Jason's been working on a stabilization fund that I think we should probably hear about as well, because that's part of the decision-making is that.
I can't speak to that, but yeah, that's why Jason's here.
Yeah, let's go through our questions about the grant itself, and then I'll ask Jason to come up and talk about that idea.
All right. I was actually, I was able to get a copy of that today, and I did read it, and it was, it was interesting to see some of the, some of the language.
There's a lot of don'ts in that.
Yeah, yeah. And at some point, it's like FEMA said, they have the right to rescind some of the money if something happens, if you don't, if you don't, you know.
They don't just really nearly give you $2.8 million, that's definitely.
If you don't follow the rules, they can, yeah.
So, so what do they, what do they mean, what wouldn't you do? I mean, what would cause that to happen? Just, just.
There's nothing we would do that would cause that to happen, but if you look in there, there's, if you look at the FEMA grants, the rules that are in all the grants, whether it's an AFG grant, whether it's a SAFAR grant, whether it's a fire protection grant, you all have to meet the same thing, such as fairness in hiring, such as, you know, actually taking, not destroying historical buildings, not, not supplanting parts of your budget, there's all these different requirements that are in there. There's nothing that we would violate in any of those sections to hire anybody that we're doing.
Okay. And didn't we, this last budget, put in a million dollars already for the impact that this is gonna have in the next three years, after three years? We did not?
No.
I thought I'd heard that was a discussion.
We planned for it in the future, but we didn't know we had the grant when we created this budget, so we plan to do it for FY '26.
All right, so you did not, we were talking about, we never did it.
If we hadn't gotten the grant, when we come forward this year, we would be asking for people. But we didn't have to because we got the grant.
We'll be starting to be putting, put money aside, you know, per Jason's suggestion in the stabilization fund of this coming fiscal year.
It's coming up.
So, at the April town meeting, there will be an article.
Right.
You know, assuming that we follow Jason's recommendation as to how to save a little bit of money in advance to, to kind of ease into this once year four hits, and that will, that's when we would start to fund that. And one of the things that I like about that is that provides town meeting the opportunity to weigh in on that. So, there will be town, town meeting, not explicitly for these positions now, because it's grant-funded, doesn't go to town meeting, but town meeting will have, will have a say, where if, if town meeting will know what that article is for, I assume it will be a standalone article, and there will, you know, be the opportunity for discussion and debate on it, and I imagine we could here then, no, we don't want to do this, and then, in theory, we have the opportunity to plan to unwind the process after three years.
That's what's nice about the way they've done this.
Yeah.
They've done this now, you have that ability to say, we've decided we can't do that, so we're not going to.
Yeah, I mean, I think this makes sense to do because, partially because we already approved the grant. I mean, that's, from my perspective, that's when we made the decision, you know, when we made the decision to apply for the grant, not now. But I really do like the fact that it has that escape hatch in it. I hope we don't have to use it, but it's good to know that it's there. If the financial condition of the town significantly worsens in the next three years, it's an option.
Yep.
That, that is there, so it's.
All right, and again, I think what happens is that as, as the years go by and we become more aware of financially responsible, that we have to ask certain questions, and we have to know more than we usually hear. Like, when this was coming forward at that time, I didn't see that, what it was, what it was going to be, I heard what it was, but didn't get to read it and understand it better. So, I think that what we have learned in the past year and a half is there's an awful lot of, let's do this, this is a great idea, and then when it comes time to actually pull the trigger, then it's like, oh, I didn't know about this or that, and that's the, that's the questions probably that the ladies have, that, you know, at the time, we are asked to look at something, it's usually in a very short period of time, it's not a lot of discussion, it sounds like a great idea, and I'm not saying any of it isn't, I'm just saying that that's probably what's happening now with the questions that are being asked. There's only one concern I have, and it's that there's gonna be an imbalance of employees per department. I don't know what that might be.
I don't know if you can look at it that way, because we each have different tasks, we have different jobs we do. You don't need the same amount of people in the health department necessarily that you would need in the fire department, and you may need more people in the police department than you would need in cable. Every department has their own needs.
That's exactly right, and that's why I said you, police and fire, I didn't, I didn't say Dana's position or any of that. Those are, those are the two important manpower departments that I'm talking of.
So, I can remember a select board member in a town that I worked for a while back during 2008, when things were dark, financially dark. He said, the community can survive, but it can only survive with fire, police, DPW. Said, that's who you need to fund. Said that's who you need to fund. So if you look at it that way, technically the town could get away with not having the rest. Not, not that we're in that state, but, you know, just to kind of give an understanding of that. And it is a labor enforcement, I mean, a labor intensive, but to the point of, you know, everybody needs staff, right? Which was kind of another catalyst, because we had heard about it already. Another catalyst for us to put in, because we're like, well, you know what? The fire service is the only one that has these opportunities. So why don't we just give it a shot? It's a long shot, but we'll do that to help the taxpayer. Because now we get our positions that we need, that we've sold to everybody. I mean, technically, we probably could get more if we put in, but eight was good. And that gives the town three years to kind of figure out everybody else's needs. And then kind of build a budget as you go. It's, rather than us coming to you and saying, we need four people, which we were going to do coming in this next budget, we've taken that off the plate. We've taken that off the taxpayers. We've taken it off you. We've taken off the town budget. Now granted, yes, Jason has to build some stuff in, but that immediate priority is not there.
Okay, and I appreciate that. I think, again, you know, I'm thinking now, okay, then that means we really have to put some police on. We can't just let, tell them that we can't afford to do it. We have to find some money for them as well. So that's, so is this, are we going to, are we going to talk, Jason going to talk with us?
Yeah, I want to make sure, yeah, Mike has his hand up. I want to make sure we have the opportunity to ask some questions about the grant, and then I'll ask Jason to come up and walk us through the, the funding for year four planning. Mike, are you all set?
Yeah, thanks.
Mike?
Yeah, no, thank you. I mean, I don't, I guess I don't understand why we would not accept this grant. For all the reasons that chief and deputy chief lay out, as far as getting a grant accepted, that's almost $3 million, and then saying no to it just seems frankly crazy to me. It gives us the additional staffing to meet the public safety need that the town has for really almost no additional, you know, for, for them covering the $2.8 million. You know, and then in three years, town meeting can decide whether or not we want to keep these eight firefighters on or go a different route. You know, and, and that's, that's something to decide down the road. You know, I, I, I think it would be a mistake to not, to one, either punt this vote to the next meeting or not accept this grant. You know, the, the fire department isn't, you know, like, and, and we all know this, right? Police, fire, they're, they're not like other members of town staff, that every department has a need. But only so many of them directly deal with public safety. Do the, do we need more police in town? Probably, yeah, from, from my understanding of the studies that have done, we need more police. We also need more firefighters. We're going to get more firefighters paid for, except for some maybe, you know, amounts for, for, for gear and stuff like that that we could cover with some ARPA money if we needed to. But, so this is almost very little cost to the taxpayer and a, and a vast increase in services, in public safety services. Not my tax bill got processed faster, or my library book got returned and processed faster. Like, these are the people who show up at house fires and car accidents on some, on the worst day of somebody's life. They see a lot, they deal with a lot. I, I, I think it's important that as a show of support to the department that we, that we have the votes to approve this grant. I, I, I guess for now, that's, that's kind of, you know, all, all, all I would say at this time is I would, I, I understand the concerns about the, the costs that this town is going to incur. Again, we're, we're not married, for lack of a better term, to these folks after that three years. You know, that, so there's, there's, there's kind of no risk there. And we, even on, since I've come on the board this year, we've approved a lot of spending for a lot of different stuff that I, I guess doesn't get the level of scrutiny that the fire department always seems to get when they show up. And this time they're showing up with $2.8 million. Asking questions is important, but I also think we need to be reasonable. This, we, you already voted to tell them to go get the grant. They got it, which is impressive. And now it sounds like we may just say, no, forget it. I mean, to me, that just seems like select board malpractice, quite frankly.
I don't think anybody said no, and I don't think we need to pontificate on the, on what we're going to do. I don't think anybody has said they're not going to support it. I didn't get to see the SAFER grant until today, and one of the questions that I did want to have is the burden rate. And the burden rate is all in there, and it's all spelled out. And it's important to know those things, and I don't think asking questions like this are going to hurt anybody. The general public will see that everybody's doing their due diligence.
I mean, I really do think that we had almost a year to do any due diligence.
I just saw it today.
I mean, due diligence, we already, we already asked them to go get it.
I don't think we have to be schooled. I think we all have opinions and there's questions. Nobody's saying that they're not going to vote for it.
Yeah, I, I mean, then why don't we just do it?
Because you asked to have questions.
Sure, Laura?
Do we have space? Because you said that we'll have them hired by January, and we're still years out on the fire station.
We do. That's a great question. We have, we've been looking into that. And we have actually, Captain Brillhart, who's sitting behind me back here, was actually able to figure out a way to get the, we only needed to add one extra area, and we were able to do that.
And I don't want my questions to be taken as anything more. I appreciate the grant, but I look at you guys, and I wouldn't want to have to come back in three years and say that we can't afford to have you.
I think it's better to come back in three years and say you can't afford to have us than to say right now, we're not going to approve the grant.
I understand.
And the result of that will be, we don't get another grant, and we probably won't get any more AFG grants, which we've gotten quite a bit of money from that as well. Because we told, we told FEMA, yes, we're, yes, we're going to do this. Here you go. FEMA said, okay, we'll look at it then, looked at it, spent, you know, we talked about the hours we spent. I have no idea what hours they spent. And they said, okay, we agree with you. Here you go. You got it. And then we're going to say, yeah, we changed our mind.
I'm not saying that. I'm saying that at the end of this, we may be faced with an even more difficult decision than what we're looking at right now. And I want to be fully aware of what we're doing right now, because I don't want to have to reach a financial decision where we can't afford our first responders.
We don't even know what that, I, I understand. Unfortunately, we don't know what that could be next year.
I know.
Or the year after.
And after.
That's with or without the grant.
And after the financial summit and looking at the big picture, it's just, it's shifted a lot of what I thought I knew last December. So I don't want my questions to be misinterpreted. It's just, you know, you guys are an important part of the community. And I don't want to have eight more of you that we're going to have to make. I, I've looked at what other towns have had to, to let go from a staffing perspective, and it's painful, so.
Well, I think it's, it's also, there's, there's multiple grants that FEMA puts out for different positions, you know. So like the Mass Emergency Management Agency, a lot of positions get advertised, this is a grant-funded position.
Yep.
You know, and then they kind of play it out, and then usually they budget in. So it's kind of the same thing with this, you know, and we'll know well in advance whether that third year is going to be a stopgap or not.
Yeah.
Which gives plenty of time for those firefighters to seek other jobs, or we may have firefighters that are retiring.
Okay.
And then we fill them back in. So there's a lot of opportunities for that. It won't be a, it won't be a, hey, welcome to work today, by the way. You're gone.
I've been through enough layoffs. I don't want to put anybody in this situation.
And unfortunately or fortunately, in, in the fire service now or any public safety or public job, that they can pretty much go wherever they want. The jobs are so plentiful.
Thank you.
One, one thought, and then a couple more questions. A thought is, you know, on the financial summit that we had, there was a lot of information from a lot of departments all at once. We know all of those are justifiable needs within the context of each department.
Yes.
I don't think anyone in this room thinks we'll be able to solve all of them and fund all of them anyway. This is at least one way that we can resolve one department's issues for three years.
Yep.
From my perspective, hip, hip, hooray. That's, you know, that's, that's great. I hope that, you know, some other grants and some other opportunities arise for some of the other departments to continue to address those needs, and, and we just chip away at it as best we can. One thing that you and I spoke about, I don't think you mentioned it in your opening statement, was equipment. That the, when, when you presented this idea to us last fall, there was the question of, okay, you know, in theory, we get the grant, we bring, have eight new people. They've got to have uniforms and tanks and all the things that go with them. Could you tell us a little bit about how we're going to make that happen?
It was interesting, so I heard about this. We got the grant on, was it Tuesday we were notified?
Monday night.
Monday night. Tuesday, the grant came out for Department of Fire Services Equipment Grant, which we apply for every year, and we've, we've outfitted our last several new firefighters through that. The monies that that grant are for, $19,000. The last quote we got for equipping eight guys was $18,900. So that would cover, completely cover all our PPE that they would need for their initial set of gear. We try to get two sets of gear for everyone. Sometimes it has, it takes a little while to get there, but it would at least get them fully, fully equipped for the first year.
Great, so we don't have to worry about taxpayer funding for, for the initial equipment.
That's 100% grant. We've never had a problem getting that grant. And there's no such thing as a guaranteed 100%. You're going to get all the time, but we've never had a problem with that grant.
Unrelated question. The, you're, you're very good at data, which I really appreciate. You like, you like your numbers. What can we look for in, you know, in two to three years? We should evaluate, you know, whoever is on this board at the time should evaluate, hey, is this working? Is this now worth putting this towards the taxpayer to fund the continued pieces? What data would you want to look for at that point?
Without question, and I'm, I'm already collecting that data. So what we're looking for is a certain number of personnel on scene within a certain period of time, right? So we need to have 15 personnel on scene within eight minutes. I'm collecting that data now. And that's for, 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 for building fires. For medical calls, we want to have an ALS unit or a BLS unit, basic life support, on scene within eight minutes. And advanced life support on scene within nine minutes. I'm collecting that data now. We want to have our shoot time, which how quickly we, from the time we're notified till we get out, we want that to be under 90 seconds. I'm tracking that now. So what we want to do is, we're slightly above that right now. We are not at the eight people within, which, I mean, excuse me, the 15 people within, within eight minutes for the structured fire. We're just not there. We don't have the staffing to do it. The new people would give us that staffing, but we'll check, we'll track that. I'm very demanding in the way the guys do the reports. You can ask the guys behind me. They get really angry at me. I'm very demanding in that they're accurate, and we know how many people are there. So all those reports, and in fact, in my, one of my submissions for my goals were just that, to have eight people on scene within the NFPA required time. To have our shoot times match with the NFPA required times of 90 seconds. And then to achieve those, these people will help us achieve those goals.
Excellent. So you'll be able to, or whoever is sitting in your chair in two and a half to three years, will be able to say, okay, here is the prior three years, and here, here's the next three years, and you would anticipate.
Not only will we be able to, we'll be expected to by FEMA.
Mm-hmm, okay.
FEMA will expect yearly reports from us that say, this is what we've done, and these are how it's resulted.
Excellent, thank you. Anyone else have any other questions? Julianne?
So, so just, I have two questions, and then they're really quick. So just to be clear, this, this grant will not cost the taxpayers any money right now. Everything is covered. Their cost of living raise, their health insurance, their pension, their OPEB.
Everything is covered at the rate that they're currently being paid, and then there's a 2% COLA per year.
Okay, so that's the only thing that might change.
And uniforms. We have to buy them uniforms.
Which you.
Which is in our budget already.
Okay, so the only cost would be this stabilization fund? Okay, and the second question I have, I tried to read about the SAFER grant, and it's not clear to me. It, it, it mentioned something about equipment, but what kind of equipment would it cover?
It doesn't cover any equipment. So FEMA, FEMA has multiple grants. And if you don't look carefully, a lot of them are on the same page. So they have what's called an assistance to firefighters grant, which is the AFG. We've gotten our, if you remember, we got our air packs through that. We got our radios through that. We've gotten quite a few things, so we got like $300,000 in radios through that. That's equipment. That's an equipment grant. The SAFER grant is strictly for personnel. That's all it's for. In fact, it's, it calls out that no, no equipment is allowed to be purchased through it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Anybody have any other questions for the chief or deputy chief before we invite Jason up to talk about stabilization? Great, thank you. Could I put you on the spot, Jason, and ask you to come up for a couple minutes and walk us through how you suggest we prepare for funding this?
Yeah, so this, when this first came up, it was about a year ago to the day that we started talking about this grant. And the, the award was exactly the numbers that we put together after, as a result of, of meeting at that time. We assumed that we were going to get this grant while we're putting together the information for the financial summit. And the concept came up of saving for some of these costs that are coming up in the future, whereas similar to this grant, there was concern during the, the multiple meetings we had on the budget this year leading into '25 over grants expiring and needing to lay off staff and so forth. And this grant is really unique in that it would be paying 100% of some employee costs for three years. We don't really have any other grants that are like this to assure people at home that we're not facing massive layoffs. If, if a grant program goes away, we, this would be kind of a larger-than-usual grant for the town. In preparation for the cost of eight firefighters, we, it's, the, the total cost is about $1.1 million a year. And to prepare for that in 2028 or 2029, whenever that happens, I know this has played out to be about six months later than we predicted originally, that we thought that we'd start the year with these firefighters on the timeline that we are working with. Regardless, the impact is the same moving down the road. And the, the idea was to use this mechanism of state budgeting called a special purpose stabilization fund. One of our reserves is the staples, is the, the all-purpose stabilization fund, whereas we put money into it every year. We, approximately $200,000 a year we transfer from free cash. So free cash is like our excess money in our checking account, and the stabilization fund is akin to a savings account, where, where it takes a higher threshold to take money out of, create, or take money out of a stabilization fund. The idea was put forward during the summit, and this was just proposed during that, that implicit in the acceptance of the grant would be support for having an article at town meeting to begin saving for the impact in the future. And assuming that we, this community is not going to want to lay off eight firefighters at the end of the three years, that we would, we would just want to plan for the expense when it, when it comes. So throughout the financial summit, the information is all online. It was August 1st. If you go to the town website and want to look for it, just type in summit into the search bar, and it'll be the first response that comes up. When you look at it, you can look at all the numbers we put together and went over. We went over millions of numbers during that, during that presentation. This was just one aspect of it. But it's clearly in there, and I, I highlighted it because it, it is something we haven't done before. We haven't created a special purpose stabilization fund in the past. We haven't needed, due to our, our fiscal prudence over the years, to dip into our stabilization fund. The town has strong finances. We want to maintain strong finances through our bond rating this year. If the, if the fire station passes, so that we can issue one of the largest bonds that we've gone out to the debt market with. So it's just, it, it's a planning tool. So the way that it would work, the mechanism would be, we would have a, a separate article to appropriate money from, to raise and appropriate from taxes to put money into a stabilization fund. And the numbers we're talking about through this model was to start out with putting $400,000 in, and then $300,000, and then draw it down over the next two years to smooth the impact of it. And what we modeled at, at this presentation, I just simply printed out the pages from the presentation to bring with me tonight. But the projected tax and payer impact of $400,000 going into the stabilization fund, would be $59 to the average single-family home valued at $625,000 currently, or at $655 in this current year in FY '25. And then, you know, $44 the next year, and the net difference of drawing it down versus the cost hitting, hitting that FY '28 would be about $84. So anyway, the, the approach was to ramp in the effect of, of the, the, the cost that, when it, when it comes into the budget, the year that it comes in.
So that in FY '29, give or take, that first year, there would be some funding from taxpayer funds immediately that year to pay for this, but also withdrawal then from that special stabilization fund. So we'll save it for a couple of years and then draw it down so that it isn't a $1.1 million hit on the tax rate in FY '29. million dollar hit on the tax rate in FY '29.
Correct, it would be, be over two, two or three years.
Mm-hmm, yeah, but, yeah, I, I really like that idea.
And, and
Big fan of that.
The, the projections that we used, we didn't, once it's in a special purpose stabilization fund, we have greater latitude for investment options, so interest rates are very high right now. So this model here doesn't, um, didn't take into account any, um, investment gains from investing in, in, um, in the, the stock market or something like that with, with the funds.
Let me ask a downer of a question. Let's say town meeting appropriates, appropriates the money to the stabilization fund, and then in three years, um, the board and town meeting decide, no, we don't want to hold on to these firefighters. I'm not anticipating that, but it's, we recognize it's a possibility. What happens with the money in that stabilization fund?
Well, again, similar to this, to the all-purpose stabilization fund, the purpose can be changed of the stabilization fund. It would just require a, a two-thirds vote of town meeting.
As well as to withdraw the money from it?
Correct.
Yeah, perfect, thank you. Anyone have any questions about the financing or any of those aspects that Jason talked about?
So that's just going to, that's going to be coming up in our budget when we talk about that town meeting, not tonight?
Not, not tonight, but leading into budget discussions for FY '26.
Okay, any, any other questions on that? Again, you know, I like the fact that that will give town meeting an opportunity to weigh in on this, um, you know, earlier than FY '29. And, and prepare for that. I think it's, it's part of prudent financial planning to fund these, uh, these firefighters long-term. Good, any other questions? Okay. Are we ready to take a vote, or do we want to do something different?
I'm ready to make a motion, Mr. Chair. Uh, I move the board vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, to accept funds in the amount of $2,864,376.24 for the Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response SAFER Grant Award and to authorize expenditure of same by the fire chief.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Mike, seconded by Laura. Any further discussions? All those in favor, Mike?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Julienne?
Aye.
I also vote aye, vote is unanimous in favor. Chief, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you members, I appreciate it. We'll keep you up to date on everything that's going on.
Before the meeting started, I did not mention, this is a special meeting that was originally created for, uh, for us to consider applicants. We ended up with a few grants to deal with, so because of that, it doesn't have some of the usual framework of the meeting, public comment, reports, things like that. As always, if anyone has any comments that they want to offer on an agenda item, uh, we're always happy to take those. And next up, we have Scott Sharptier to discuss acceptance of grant award to support Phase Two of the Water and Sewer Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition SCADA project. Wolfing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, board members. I was excited to have a $491,000 grant in front of you, and now I feel a little depleted.
Oh, no!
$0.8 million is quite a bit different, um, but
We appreciate every penny. Thank you.
We'll go over our pennies now.
Okay, deal.
Thank you. So, um, as you indicated, it's a SCADA system, uh, supervisory control and data acquisition. What it is, is, um, a computer program that's isolated from the internet and from other data sources that monitors the operations and allows us to modify the operations for our water and sewer facilities. Um, so for example, you have a sewer pump station on Hudson Street that manages 99.9% of our sewer flow. In the event one of the pumps goes down, we have a high rain event and the, um, the wet well goes high, we have the ability to swap out remotely one pump to another. Um, as opposed to before, or currently, we get an alarm, on-call person comes in, half an hour later, they get to the, to the location, and hopefully they get there in time. Um, now we think we can do it from an iPad, laptop, or what have you. The vast majority of these systems were first implemented for, uh, treatment plants, water treatment plants, sewer treatment plants. Um, there are a lot of moving parts in those plants, and it's important that one control center can see what everything is doing and modify it. Um, with the, you know, advent of wireless communications, that has expanded to remote locations like this. Uh, there was a Phase One project that was, uh, approved at town meeting four years ago. Um, that included some of our more major components, our Assabett Hill Water Storage Tank, that's our primary water source outside the authority, um, the Hudson Street Pump Station that I'm referring to, um, as well as the, uh, the base station at the highway, the water garage. This project includes, uh, include adding all of our pump stations, the rest of our pump stations into it, there's five other pump stations, our MWRA interconnection, um, which is going to be very critical for not just monitoring it, but also annual reporting. It'll be nice because we could, it's like a source meter, so we'll know exactly how much water we're bringing in from the authority, um, on a, you know, 15-minute increment, and how much money we're pushing on to the system to the customers. So in the event we saw a large, uh, change or anomaly with that, uh, we would be notified with an alarm immediately. As opposed to what happens currently is we get a monthly reading, and we find out there's a 200 million gallon discrepancy, where'd it go, it went into some swamp somewhere, we'll know much more quickly, so it can be more responsive to lost water. Another piece that this is going to include is a component of redundancy. Our water garage is our base station, so that has, it's like our operations control center. Um, one thing we learned with, uh, with the pandemic is that having redundancy, uh, allows us of, uh, contin, a continuity of operations, um, that's needed for, for critical facilities. So we're going to have a, a satellite base station at the Hudson Street Pump Station. During COVID, we had half our, our team reporting to the wa, water garage, the other half to the pump station. Kind of an unfortunate place to work out of, but what have you.
Was that, sorry, was that for distancing people?
Yes, yes, yeah. We, we, we separated both of our, uh, the water, water sewer department as well as the highway department.
Got it.
Half the highway department worked out of the cemetery, unfortunately. The other, ha, half of the water department worked out of a sewer pump station, so.
Oh, my goodness.
Regardless, so now we'll have redundancy in our base of operations. It's an expensive project, um, we submitted multiple earmark requests to our, our federal representatives, um, Congressman McGovern, um, Senator, oh, Liz Warren, and, um, or the senator.
Ed Markey.
Ed Markey, thank you very much. Um, Ed Markey, uh, McGovern's earmark went through, it went to the EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency. Um, it is classified as a non-competitive grant award. That's how they work their federal earmarks. We were notified of the award, um, a little over a year ago. It takes a long time to go through the, uh, award process. My department has to go through a lot of, uh, federal grant management training. Uh, the treasurer collector has to go through quite a bit of federal grant management training. Uh, our consultant does the same. Um, all that work is complete. We have the contract from the federal government ready to, uh, ready to move forward, um, as well as with our consultant, our SCADA consultant. So I'm here today to ask you to accept $491,000 from the federal government.
Okay, any questions? Julienne?
So, is the SCADA system, can the individual homeowner monitor their water usage?
No, that's, um, an ion water program we have. So when we did the meter replacement program in 2016 and 17, um, every water meter in town has a cellular communicator. It's a little gray cylinder about the size of an empty toilet paper roll. Um, that sends a text message every day, uh, to our database management vendor that has water readings every hour. So you, as a customer, can have your account, log into it, um, and see what your hourly water use was. You can set alarms, so if you go on vacation and there's any water use, you can be alerted by a text message. Um, if there is a continuous use, you can have a, an alert as well. So it's a good mechanism for customers to, to monitor their water use and, and, the, one of the goals is, is conservation. I've said before, we sell water, but we try to convince you not to buy it. Um, so it's a good conservation mechanism to realize when you left the hose on, things like that.
It's a great program. So, so the, the one that, the SCADA is kind of like the municipal version of the homeowner's thing?
Yes, except that we can control things.
Okay.
So a lot of alarm systems will say, you know, pump two alarm, and you don't know what the alarm is. Is the pump off? Is it, is it overheating? SCADA will say, pump two is overheating. You get that alert, you can switch pump two off, switch pump one on, and then get there in time, you know, to, to repair whatever the issue is with the pump, as opposed to what we do now, which is you get a, an alarm for pump two, you have no idea what it is, and you better hurry up and get in so you can switch over to pump one.
Thank you.
Questions, comments?
Are there any additional costs associated with this, or is this just going to be completing that project from a few years ago?
There are no additional costs. All of the software licensure we have, um, is currently in the budget from Phase One.
Got it.
Um, this is just adding more, more laptops onto the same network, for lack of better terms.
Awesome.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move the vo, board vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, to accept the funds in the amount of $491,000 from the Federal Environmental Protection Agency Earmark Grant Award to support Phase Two of the Water and Sewer Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition SCADA Project and to authorize expenditure of same by the DPW Director.
Second.
Second.
Made by Lisa, seconded by Laura. Um, any other comments or questions?
Good job.
Thank you for doing this, we appreciate it.
Very good, all those in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Julienne?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
I also vote aye, vote is unanimous in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you for bringing $491,000 to our attention, we always appreciate that. Um, and next up, speaking of free money, um, this isn't a formal grant award, but to discuss the Massachusetts Department of Transportation free-of-charge offer for rectangular, rapid, flashing beacon, RRFB assemblies.
RRFB seem to be our, our topic of, of discussion lately. So the state came out with, um, a program where they allow communities to, um, submit requests for RRFB assemblies. Um, the state buys them, they provide them to us in a box, and then we would have them installed. Um, they don't have any installation, they don't select the locations, it's, um, funded by the state to the municipalities for town-owned roadways, not state highways. They have a, a series of criteria that they, one, either needs, needs to be met, or two, they use as part of the evaluation criteria. Considering, um, the need, I'm guessing the evaluation criteria will also become a requirement, because everybody's going to ask for a bunch, and there's only so much. Um, I, I gave a memorandum that kind of outlined the, the, the program. And I went through a few intersections that I know have come up for discussion here, as well as residents, uh, referencing the needs to, to our department. Um, I looked through those to identify which ones would be eligible. So the eligibility criteria, there's several of them. Um, they look at intersections that are, um, what, what controls are the intersections? Is there a traffic light, or is there a stop sign? Um, their preference is to, uh, award to uncontrolled intersections or crosswalks that are not at intersections. Um, we have some mid-block crosswalks, those are known to be unsafe, um, or more dangerous than others, so they, they focus on those. Another requirement is the speed limit as compared to the traffic volume. So their threshold in the evaluation is 9,000, uh, vehicle trips per day. That's a pretty high number. Um, the vast majority of our roads are, are under that. So for example, South Street exceeds it, um, North Gate does not. So that's one of their criteria. Uh, they do not, they, they're not going to award any RRFB assemblies for roadways that are 30 miles an hour. So as you go, um, up in speed, you need more volume for awards, and 35 miles an hour is the, is the threshold that they've set. The, um, for, this is for standard two-lane roadways. If you have a larger roadways that are municipally owned, it's a lot different. So four lanes with a raised island, or, you know, three lanes in each way, six lanes, that's different, but we don't, we don't have that here. Um, when I look, when I look through the roadways, uh, these are the ones that I identify that would be eligible, Davis Street at Indian Meadow, I know we have discussed that before. The Upper Pleasant Street, we're doing the Lower Pleasant Street as part of the ARPA funding, the Upper Pleasant Street would be one that's eligible. South Street at, um, at Alcott, so there's a few on South Street that are just miscellaneous crosswalks that are put in very cumbersome locations. Um, that would be one of them. There's another crosswalk on South Street at Cedar Hill that would not be eligible. There is no ADA compliant ramp on one side, nor is there a sidewalk. So another piece that they consider, not just where the, where the crosswalk is, or how many vehicles drive over it, um, or the, what speed they drive over, is also the accessibility component of it. Uh, we have some crosswalks that have no sidewalks on either end. Those would not be eligible, there's no ADA compliant access to those crosswalks. Um, so, you know, we have, uh, over 70 crosswalks in town, um, they're all over the place. It would take, it takes some time to review them all, um, for sure. We know where they all are, we have them all mapped out. Um, this was just a, a list of ones that I identified that I know of. So I was hoping that the, the, the board would, well, one, consider this and say, yeah, please go get free stuff from the state, which, that's pretty easy. Uh, but if there's any other crosswalks that you know of, that you want me to look at, in particular, you know, we will. The grant, the, the applications are due October 10th. It's not a lot of time, every single location has a separate application. So it's a timely process to, to review, evaluate, and submit. But there's, you can submit as many requests as you like, um, I just want to make sure the ones we submit are eligible. I don't want to waste DOT's time with 10 of them that would never get awarded. I don't think they'll get to the 11th at that point.
So you, are you saying there is, there's a possibility of 10 from this award to be done?
I don't know what the limit's going to be, they don't have a limit on it. Um, each, each location has a separate application, each location will be evaluated separately.
Okay.
What I'm, what I'm getting at is if North Bros submits 20 of them, and the first 11 would not be awarded because it doesn't comply with the requirements, I don't know if they're going to bother reading the 12th.
Right. Um, okay, so there's, there is a couple of questions that I have, just to, just to reiterate what is included, you're saying that it has to be 25 mile an hour zone, not 30?
35.
Oh, 35 mile an hour zone?
35 mile, yes, 4A. That's the maximum speed, too, right? There is no, so, um, there's a, a design table associated with the grant application. Uh, two lanes, under 9,000 vehicles per day, that's pretty much everything we have outside of South Street, um, which has between 9 and 15,000. We have nothing over 15,000 as a town road. So again, um, under 9,000 vehicles per day, two lanes, ineligible 30 miles an hour, greater than 40 miles an hour requires an engineering study. They're not going to award either of those, I don't believe, unless we have an engineering study, but we're not going to get that done by October 10th. So 35 miles an hour, under 9,000 vehicles per day, that's the eligibility criteria. So if there's a ti, a road in town that has 35 mile an hour speed limit, it's probably under 9,000 vehicles. The next tier I look at is, is it at an intersection with a stop control? Or, we don't have traffic lights, but is it an intersection with a stop control? If it is not, um, you go to the next criteria that says, does it have ADA accessibility? Cedar Hill was one, for example, there's no ADA ramps, there's no sidewalks on one side, it's, it's actually just like a stone area that people walk up to. Um, so that would not be like, would not likely be awarded by the state.
Okay, so, um, there are, there may be other places, obviously, we're going to be looking at. So you're going to go for these three that we've already, you've already noted on here?
Yep.
How does this affect the ones that we've asked for, for, for on Route 20? Not, not at all?
No, they're, they're, it's a completely di, different program. The ones on Route 20, I, I have a meeting with, um, one of the District Three representatives later this week to discuss that program. My understanding is that they're considering a district-wide RRFB installation. I believe a lot of communities have reached out to state-owned roads within their, uh, communities to get these installed. Like, I'm thinking they're going to put a large project out, they refer to them as book, book, uh, book contracts.
Okay.
So they'll bid it out, you know, 50, 100, whatever they put together, in one contract, we'll just bop around the district and put them all in.
Okay, with that in mind, Hemlock to Little Tree, it's across Route 20?
Yep.
I've had a few residents already ask me about putting in the cro, a crosswalk there in those lights, there's no crosswalk there? I, I didn't think of it, because, and I didn't go far enough down that road of those five that we talked about.
At Hemlock to Little Pond?
Yes.
That, yeah, that's an unsignaled intersection. I would be surprised if Mass DOT was willing to install a crosswalk there. They may. My, my guess is that their response is going to be no, go to Bartlett, um, as opposed be no, go to Bartlett, as opposed to having a crosswalk on that section of Route 20, which is fast.
Pretty fast, yeah.
Yeah, I would think that they would prefer to have people walk to Bartlett, where it's a signalized intersection, and they can hit the button, and it stops.
Although Bartlett's is a difficult one to go through. I mean, I walked down there with, you know, a couple of different people, women with their baby carriage and such. The road, sidewalks thin, it's not wide enough, really, right at that corner across from Brittany's. And even going across is very difficult, very, a lot of traffic, a blind spot coming out of Bartlett heading east. So that, this is something I think that they work with a school, and they're going from Hemlock, from Little Pond across the street to the neighborhoods and stuff like that. So if you could just, you know, imagine and see what we, what we might have to do of
I certainly will.
Of creating something there for there. Because that end of town doesn't seem to have any walkability.
There's probably an opportunity with the safe routes to schools to get some improvements along Bartlett Street, so that you can go from Algonquin to the intersection, cross over to the driving school side, and then go across Route 20.
That would be really good, because I've seen the kids come out of the driving school, crossing over in droves, in the main road with no crosswalk. So it's quite a concern. And I did have the mother with the baby carriage. Look at that. Okay.
Happy to reach out to the DOT.
Thanks.
Other questions? Comments? Mike? Oh, I'm sorry, Mike then, Julianne.
Yeah, thanks, Scott. The RRFBs that would be installed, these would be the standard ones, and not include that additional LED lighting that we had discussed a meeting or two ago?
That is correct. And they would be Mass DOT's standard specification. We would be responsible for the installation, depending on the timing and the workload, and the award. You know, if we get awarded one or two of them, or three, the staff has time to install those. If we get a dozen, we'll hire that out. But they will not have the spotlights on them.
Okay. And you had mentioned that there's something 70-some-odd crosswalks in town? And it is a tight deadline coming up on October 10th. Is it possible to do a review if not all, but a good portion of the crosswalks, just to say, okay, these would be eligible, and let's request them? Or you think it's better just to kind of go with some heavy hitters, or important ones that we know are eligible, and move forward from there, rather than asking for too many, if that makes sense?
I'm going to split the town in half by Route 20, and my assistant is going to do half the town, and I'm going to do the other half. With my knowledge of town, I'm thinking I'm probably going to get the southern half.
Whoever gets more buys dinner, or whoever gets less buys dinner, or something like that?
We'll submit what's deemed eligible. I certainly don't want to saturate them with likely ineligible's, but we will submit for what I believe will be awarded.
All right. Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Julianne?
So, in the next few days, if someone calls, who would they, who would they call to say, I have a great idea?
That would be me. Call Public Works, so they can send an email. If they're aware of a cross, we're going to go through them all. You know, we have them all GIS'd and mapped out. Every one of them's going to be observed and driven out, too. You know, hopefully we have the time to do it all, and nothing occurs between now and then that requires immediate attention. But our intent is to apply for everything that will be eligible for.
Okay.
And for the benefit of the public, we haven't talked about Route 20 at all, where, which is the busiest road in town. We all know that that's a state highway. This grant program does not apply to that.
Right. All of Main Street, all of West Main Street, all of Southwest cutoff is state-owned by West Main Street, including going past Zechos. South Street is Route 135, that's a locally-owned, state-numbered road.
Excellent. Thank you. I assume we're all supportive of asking Scott to seek these?
Yes.
Okay, we don't need to vote on that?
I'll go find some more money.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Scott.
All right. Next up, we have the reason that this meeting was scheduled. Deliberation and vote to appoint town administrator. So, you know, let's recap a little bit. So, Dana's doing something. Okay. We have, we interviewed four candidates back a couple of weeks ago. This past, I think it was Thursday and Friday, that the two candidates that we selected as finalists came in and met with staff. We heard from, I certainly heard from a few department heads with input from that process, which I think was valuable. I suspect we've all heard from, hopefully, the same people. I know there were one or two emails that I got that were just to me, that I forwarded out to the full board and copied Tim and Diane on. And I thought that was, that was a really good process, something that I know a lot of towns don't do, is have staff come in. You know, just, you know, informally, my own take was that nobody said anything really negative about either of them, but everyone had a preference, and the preference varied. And I think that's good. I think that means that we selected two people to go forward. I think to get us to where we are, Tim, could I ask you to, you know, sort of walk through the initial advertising process and everything else, so that we all know the steps that you went through to find all the eligible candidates, and the public would benefit from that as well?
Yeah, I mean, if it helps the board. I know I covered this when we initially had the conversation, but, so there's organizations like the International City Managers Association. We did a featured advertisement on the ICMA newsletter and on their website. We posted at the MMA, the Mass Municipal Association, and they have, it's called the Beacon Newsletter, but they do it mostly online. And there are subgroups inside of that, and we chose to do a featured with leaders, women leaders in local government. So that was a segment that we could get to a population, we would have a diverse group of applicants, which I think we did. I emailed and called certainly the first suburbs around us, and other managers that I know, they're either retired or upon retirement. The Foxborough Town Manager, who, Bill Keegan, who I've known for 20 years. Bernie Lynch, who obviously works for his own Paradigm Associates, I've known him for 20 years, telling them about the opportunity. Kevin from Shrewsbury recommended one person. Another group I called was the Call-In Center. I talked to Mary Akashi, and she recommended someone who was an assistant in a surrounding town outside of Boston. The commute for her was too far, so she didn't apply. But I talked to her at length about the position. So it was a lot of groundwork to get people to apply. But I looked to other people that I respected in the business, because they, you know, I just got back into this, what, a year ago. I didn't even make it to the MMA Annual Conference in January, so I don't know all the people that are kind of coming up through Massachusetts. So reaching out to those people who know those people coming up, and telling them about the opportunity, I think was good, and it gave you a variety of candidates on a very compressed timeline. We obviously did LinkedIn, my LinkedIn, personal, you know, I don't know what it is. Is it a social media? I don't know if LinkedIn is a social media.
Your network.
Yeah, we did Facebook, the website, Instagram. I don't know if there were any other ones that we did, but those were the logical things that we did. So it was even Buzz and Bob, right? I know, I've known them for a long time. I've called them, had conversations. They have applicants that have applied for other jobs that didn't make it. They probably don't want to say this out loud, but I'll tell you, they passed and noticed along to those unfortunate souls that didn't get jobs in other places that this travels over. So I tried to reach as far as I could, and as deep as I could, to get as many applicants as possible. So that was really it in a nutshell. I don't think I missed anything.
How many did you actually get? Did you get 15? 15 applications?
19? 16?
I'm not sure.
I don't know. Nobody's had it. I was that number. We can get the file. It's either 16 or 19 sticks in my head.
Yeah, no, that's just to prove that, that we got some activity.
Yeah, you got a lot. They had no government experience, but they were, you know, extremely intelligent, engineering, finance folks. They didn't hear about it through these traditional methods that I mentioned. They heard about it from Facebook or wherever else, because they were local folks that were extremely bright, but just no municipal experience at all.
Okay. Thanks.
Very good. So, one thing I neglected to mention is, we did ask our two finalists, Stephanie Bacon and Mark Strange, to provide some essay responses to two questions that went out to them, and we all got those, I think, Thursday night, Friday morning. You sent them out to us. We have, we have those. Do we want to talk about the essay responses? Do we want to get right into deliberations, feedback from town staff? I would, I would ask maybe not mention town staff names particularly, but general opinions are fine. You know, whatever, whatever we can do. My hope is we can, we can move this along, and I'm hoping we can, we can choose a finalist tonight. That would be, that would be ideal, given that we only have Tim for a couple more weeks. And, you know, whoever we hire will need to give notice to their current employer. We don't know how much notice that is. It's probably different, you know, for each of those two candidates, and we want to, you know, inform them right away. What we did last time, and this is in the draft motion for tonight, is that it would be a conditional offer of employment, subject to two, really three things. One is a physical, two is contract negotiations, which we would start that discussion in executive session tonight, and three would be, you know, the background check that MRI would do. We've already agreed to have that done, and everyone's aware of that. All right. Do we want to, want to start? I can name a candidate, and we could talk about that candidate?
I just want to say that, that Mark had, has two years' experience as a town administrator. Stephanie has seven as an assistant town administrator. So in my, in my head, I think that it's almost equal. You know, it's, Stephanie had a good learning opportunity, and Mark, I guess, kind of, well, he had those other positions and had one. So I think that criteria is, you know, equal for me.
Yeah, I, I found them different, but equal. That they're, I'm very pleased with our finalists. I mean, they're both, they're both ready to do the job. From my perspective, either, I'm happy with either one. I think they, they have both proven themselves, and the comments that we got back in aggregate from town staff, it's consistent with that, that they're, they're both ready to do the job. You know, I think that they each bring something a little bit different to the table. Stephanie has not been a town administrator, but she's been an assistant for a long time, in a stable role, same assistant role for a long time. And she used to work here. So she brings some Northborough knowledge, but not recent enough that she knows absolutely everybody. She knows a few people. I think there were roughly about four department heads that were also department heads back when she was here. So there are, you know, there's, there's some advantages in both directions. I know there were some discussions last time about commuting distance, which I think is not an issue, but for some people, it may be an issue that one lives further than the other. You know, it's, it's nice to have a tough decision.
Yes.
Because I think we, I don't think we can go wrong with either of these two.
Do you want me to dive in?
Sure. I'd love it for someone to dive in. Thank you.
I, I really appreciate everyone who did apply, and it's, I wish we weren't going down this road, but I appreciate all your efforts to get us here. I loved meeting the candidates, and I really appreciated the opportunity for the candidates to meet with town staff. I think that the future is really going to be important, that we've got really good communication and collaboration. I thank Tim for really opening that up for us, and I want someone that's really going to continue with those efforts. So I thank all the staff that did reach out, and I hope that we can continue, you know, from, from the transparency perspective and collaboration for our decision-making process. I've appreciated the feedback from the residents. The interview process has been really, I've preferred it to the last version. I liked having more involvement, rather than waiting. I appreciate the interview committee last time, but it just, I enjoyed this, this version as well, and thank you for doing it on a compressed timeline. My, my feedback, you know, I think where the town is right now, I really agree that both candidates are great, but I think Steph having the background and knowledge of some of the staff and the processes in Northborough, I would like to see her in that position, just based on the fact that I think she knows them, and it would really help her hit the ground running quickly, and be able to really have a smooth transition. And then hopefully, with some good, you know, transition of administrator goals, you'll be able to help, you know, with that process. And then she's going to know the personalities and how to help continue motivating people, and so that's, that's my feedback. So, thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Okay. Who would like to go next?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with Laura. I think she, I think she said it well, you know, based on the, the in-person interview, the essays, and then the feedback from the staff, I would, I would say Stephanie is the number-one choice to move forward with, for town administrator. For all the other reasons Laura had mentioned, and then just to, you know, sort of in aggregate, and it, and it's close, right? This is a hard decision, and that's good. That's where we want it to be. And, you know, I think both Stephanie and Mark could certainly step in and be the town administrator of Northborough, but our job is to try and find somebody, right, who's going to be, as best in our opinion, the best fit, and the best person moving forward right now. And I, I think that's Stephanie, or Steph.
Thanks, Mike. Anyone else like to chime in?
Well, I have to agree with Mike, that we're, you know, all other criteria being considered, and that they're both great candidates. Now we have to look at who's the best fit, who's gonna, you know, who can, and because she was here before, she can hit the ground running, almost. Maybe not quite, but, you know, we've been in a transition for a year.
Yeah. In the end, you're, you're just a long-term interim.
Oh, no.
I appreciate that. An agent of change.
That's right, an agent of change.
There we go.
So, and I have to, I concur with my, my team. We're actually sounding like we're almost ununanimous. Oh, my goodness. I don't know if that's right. I was also impressed with the selections that we had, and with the amount of people that were interested. I think we have, we've probably turned a corner in wanting to come to Northborough. And I think that Steph does offer a little bit more in the recognition and the stability of being in her position for as long as she was. She wanted to be in Northborough, and she made a, an effort to come out and put a lot of time and energy into that decision. I hope she's here for a little bit of time. I can't expect a five-to-10-year promise, but I certainly hope a three-year promise won't work. And I think that it may be, it may be a good model for us to have, you know, the momentum that we've started, because I think we are in a, in a pretty good area right now. I keep talking about the summit. I love the summit, but I like the globalness of knowing what everybody has got to do now, and it works well, having that overview of understanding. And I think that that's a big change for what the boards have had in the past. So I would, I would wholeheartedly agree with my, my colleagues and say that Steph would probably be my choice, and I'm looking forward to perhaps having a list of what Tim had done in his time here, and what his plans were, and what got accomplished, and what got finished, what was still open, and what the dreams were for ahead. So I hope we can put all that together. Thank you.
Now, it's my turn, and I think we're going to be unanimous on this. I, as I said, I really liked both Mark and Steph. And, you know, in the end, it came down to chemistry. I think that we had a good chemistry with both, but even a little bit more with Stephanie. I really saw a reflection of good chemistry between Steph and the staff members and the reports that we got. There was no, again, there were no, this isn't, you know, to reflect poorly on Mark. You know, I think everyone liked and respected him, and he's a smart person. And he is doing well right now where he is, and he will do well in whatever next position he has. But, but I think I agree, I know I agree, that Steph is, is the right choice for Northborough. So I think we've, we may have sorted this out already. We can talk about it anymore. If not, I would love to have a motion on this.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, we ready for a motion? Okay, Laura, would you like to make a motion?
Thank you so much. I move the board vote to make a conditional offer of employment to Stephanie Bacon for the position of Northborough Town Administrator. This offer is conditioned upon the satisfactory background review investigation conducted by Municipal Resources, Inc., a physical exam, and the successful negotiation of the terms of appointment by the Select Board.
Second.
Motion made by Laura, seconded by everyone, but I'll give it to Julianne. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor. Laura?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Congratulations very much, Stephanie. I don't know if you're watching tonight, but I imagine you'll hear pretty quickly. If not, we'll make some phone calls during a break.
I can't wait to get started working with it.
I know, I know. This is, this is very exciting. All right, so that actually concludes that item. Is there any other business to come before the board, before we go into executive session to start the contract discussions on that?
Thank you.
Oh, Julianne?
So, we have received several emails about extending the sidewalk on So we, we have received several emails about extending the sidewalk on Maple Street. Can we make sure that's on our next agenda, so we can figure out?
I was gonna, I was gonna ask Scott while he was here.
Oh.
And then, of course, I forgot, because we are, you, the two, either of you could ask him. So we approved ARPA money for design for several sidewalks in town. My curiosity is, when is that expected to come back? Because that would then trigger that discussion, because we'll, we'll know what the approximate cost of that project is, and then we can see how we want.
They're probably 70% done with the design of
Okay.
areas with that, those ARPA funds. But I don't have a full report to give, but...
Yeah, no, I don't expect you to have the answer on that.
No, no, no. I asked Mitch, I asked Scott about it today.
Okay.
Nothing to report, except that it's 70% complete.
Okay. Yeah, if you could let the board know, you know, in the next couple of days, when Scott anticipates that being ready for board discussion. I assume that our next regular meeting, you know, hopefully by then, we will, we will have that. And then, yeah, that'll, you know, certainly be, I know everyone's interest with ARPA weighs heavily toward sidewalk construction.
Well, and I think we already, we already asked to have Maple Street done for that. That was already.
Yeah, I don't think we have to direct him to do anything else. We're just waiting for the numbers back. We can't make a decision on constructing, whether it be Maple Street or anything else, until we have the costs available. And then we can see, do we fund it with ARPA? Do we do something else?
Right.
To get those forward.
Okay.
Okay, I appreciate you bringing that up.
And I do want to thank all the, all the residents who have been writing in and asking for that. It's been a long time coming. So we can do as fast as we can.
Very good. There being no other business, we'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection 2, to conduct strategy sessions and our contract negotiations for the town administrator, due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board. Board will not return to open session and will adjourn directly from executive session.
Second.
Motion made by Julianne, seconded by Laura. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. We are going to executive session, 7:35 PM. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.